Good evening, everyone. Tonight's regular meeting of the Board of Education for Waterbury, Connecticut, November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty. Our agenda is we're going to start off with a silent prayer and Superintendent Ruffin, if you would so lead. Any, any notes that you want to add before we start the silent prayer?
Thank you, Commissioner. For last four moment of silence in memoriam for the following. Katrina Russey, a third grade teacher at Chase Elementary, who passed away on October fourteenth. Mary Lindsay, a retired elementary school teacher in Waterbury for thirty years, passed away November fourth. Chris Gerald Castillo, freshman at Kennedy High School, he was fourteen years old, passed away on November eighth. Let us remember all of them and their families and recognize that contribution, their dedication and their passion within the Waterbury School community.
Thank you very much. Our next agenda item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Juanita Hernandez, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic.
For which it stands. One nation.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible.
With liberty. Thank you very much, Commissioner Hernandez.
You're welcome.
Carrie, we are going to do a roll call for attendance.
Commissioner Brown. Vice President Harvey.
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Yeah.
Commissioner Orso.
Yeah.
Commissioner Serrano Adorno.
Here.
Commissioner Stango.
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney.
Here.
Commissioner Van Stone.
President.
President Pagano.
I am here, please. That's the bad phone, I'm sorry. Our next agenda item is Communications. May please get a motion to receive and place on file. Communications that are listed.
Motion to receive and place on file, communications as listed.
Second.
Discussion? No discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Abolish. Abstain. The ayes have it, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Our next agenda item is approval of the minutes from the last meeting. May I have a motion for that?
Motion to approve minutes as listed.
May I have a?
Second.
Second.
Discussion? No discussion? May I have a vote of yea or nay?
Yes.
Yes.
Abstain. Beautiful. The motion carries. Guys, work with me here, I'm a little rusty. Our next discussion is public address to the board. May I have a motion, please?
We don't need a motion, nobody signed up, according to Bebe.
Okay, then we will move on. Thank you very much. Superintendent's announcements is the next agenda item. Dr. Ruffin, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have a few announcements for the night. One is to talk about the status of the district. As you know, our original plan was after Thanksgiving, we would go into partial virtual and partial in-person, especially to accommodate the needs of our pre-K eight and now six students, pre-K five, and also our special education students, as well as bilingual and specialized programs. Quickly, that changed over the course of less than two full days after the decision was made. And that was due to the increase in COVID positives that we were experiencing within our community as well as within our schools. While I, I do believe that our young students, especially our pre-K five and our pre-K eight and our specialized programs, are, are equipped and socially and emotionally, pedagogically, you know, ready and would benefit extremely well from an in-person environment. It has always been our focus to maintain the health and the safety of all of our students and our employees when the pandemic hit in March of two thousand and twenty. And with that constantly being the focus as we moved forward, we made the shift to again go into full virtual as of Tuesday, half of this week. That, that was an important decision to make. It was, it wasn't a difficult decision to make because it was the right one, but it was difficult to make because you knew that so many people were still going to take advantage of the fact that we had some in-person instruction. And, and many parents and many were concerned about what happens to their children, their family, if they are delivering instruction and not able to provide for their children while they are committed to providing the teaching and learning environment in Waterbury Public Schools. So we recognize that as a real concern and, and do not minimize that at all. However, when people are seeing an increase in COVID positive, it affects all of us. It affects all of us in different, different ways. So we are, we are very concerned for our teachers and our, our staff who continue to provide quality instruction for our students in a virtual environment. We're pleased that we have a wonderful partner who has stepped up in the YMCA and has offered the Learning Pods, which will allow our school employees to participate by enrolling their students in the Learning Pods at the YMCA and still being able to provide for the instruction of our students here in Waterbury Public Schools. This is available not only to our employees, but it is available to our parents as well. We have also sent out a questionnaire to our, our employees to seek information from them to determine if there are other needs that they may have in provision of childcare so that they may continue to work and continue to contribute to the educational environment of our students. We anticipate that we're going to remain in the virtual academy for all of our students in Waterbury until after the Dr. Martin Luther King Holiday in January. And we are constantly keeping in touch with the CDC, with our Health Department, as well as with other agencies that assist in sharing information that will guide our decisions as we move forward. We do expect that our students and our teachers will be back in our hybrid model at some point in January. And we will continue to observe all of the current data to determine whether we will also be able to go into a full in-person for more students. If not in January, then certainly as we move forward in, in February, March or April. And it would be our intent to go into as much of an in-person in this school year as possible. In the interim, we were going to provide the, the virtual, as we have said a couple of days ago. We feel very comfortable that everyone that needs a computer has one. We certainly have enough computers for every single parent-child who requested it to work at home. And, and we also have the availability of those resources to prepare for our pre-K students as we design a program that is conducive for pre-K. Understanding fully that our pre-K students are not going to be learning in the same format with sitting with instruction and only a teacher for four hours or more every day. We are developing that instructional model that best meets the needs of, of their development. And we'll be moving forward with that. We are very pleased in Waterbury that we're able to not only provide the computers for all of our students, but that Waterbury at this point is a true one-to-one school district, meaning that our students have a device. And, and that is not a missing piece. We are pleased with the offerings of Comcast, who has provided vouchers for our students needing fast internet access. And we've provided over three hundred and fifty vouchers to families who have requested them. We want to make certain that all of our families know that if fast internet is not something that you currently have, it is accessible and those vouchers are available at your individual schools. We, we will provide those for you. We will help you with the instructions on how to be able to enroll that you too may have the internet access to allow students to use their devices at home without any unnecessary delays. Likewise, we do have whenever a computer is broken, ways of being able to not only repair it, but to replace it. But I want to make sure that everyone understands these devices are to be treated with the utmost of care. And it's not an unending supply. It is definitely something that one needs to take care of even more delicately than a textbook or material, materials and supplies that were provided in the past. So taking care of that device as your, your, your lifeline to instruction is critically important. We, we, we are not going to continue to replace devices because of neglect. And we certainly believe that our students and our families have taken really good care of the devices and want to encourage people to add that additional safety measure to assure that the computers are operative for the entire time that the student is enrolled in Waterbury Public Schools. Likewise, while we have spent a lot of time and will continue to do so, monitoring the safety and the health and the COVID nineteen positives that we have among our students and among our staff, other things continue to develop in Waterbury. Our teachers, our employees, our students are doing amazing work, not only in the virtual learning environment, but also in their community and giving of themselves so that others can have a better life. And we continue to move projects along in Waterbury. I'd like to draw your attention to some slides that perhaps Shajetta has presented on the screen, or maybe you're able to see those on the screen that will allow you to see just some of the many things that Waterbury continues to do as we move our district forward. We were very pleased for any of our commissioners and of course, all of, of, of the staff and, and those that are have been instrumental in moving along the Wendell Cross Project. We're excited about having a new school in about a year and a half from now. And we want to share with you the most recent visit as we had an opportunity to see the topic-off ceremony. So the city of Waterbury and Waterbury Public Schools celebrated the progress of the new construction of Wendell Cross with a topping-off ceremony. The pre-K eight school will welcome nearly seven hundred students with outstanding design, creative work, music and technology spaces for all of our students to learn. We're very pleased about that. Wallace Middle School planted trees to honor our veterans. Mrs. Muck's eighth grade social studies class honored all veterans by planting two trees on the school grounds as living tributes to our military heroes who have served. And you will see commissioners and everyone that we have shared some pictures of those trees for your enjoyment. You can see them here on the slide. These are also keepsakes. We'll make certain that people are able to see those beyond our board meeting and beyond this announcement. Pinker Elementary School in October held a reading challenge. And in this reading challenge, the students were motivated and encouraged to read, to read as many books as possible, but to read at least twenty minutes a day and to record their readings in a reading log. The highest number of minutes read by the end of October were to receive prizes. And so we were honored, the students were honored that three winners were awarded after this fabulous month of reading. Crosby Art Teacher takes second place in the national competition. We were excited about that. Crosby High School's art teacher, Ms. Dillon Negro, was chosen by NEA, NEA Today as the second place winner of the Get Out the Vote. She designed a postcard for a contest that was, that was for teachers. She was one of only four national finalists. And Ms. Dillon Negro says that she was inspired to create her postcard by our nation's flag and the apple, which is a powerful symbol of knowledge and education. Westside Middle School had a pink out to support the National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. They sponsored a pink out on October twenty-third and staff donated two dollars to wear pink tops and students donated a dollar to wear the pink tops. The school's collection of four hundred and twenty-four dollars was donated to the Harold Lever Regional Cancer Center in Waterbury. Those are a few of the many things that are ongoing in Waterbury. As we navigate this pandemic, just know that our focus is on doing great things for, for all people. And that our students and our staff have never forgotten that while we are in a pandemic, they also are very instrumental in giving hope and, and light to others within our community. So we celebrate them. Also, I would like to wish all of our commissioners and all of our viewers a very happy Thanksgiving during this time of a pandemic. I believe more than ever, we, we not only count our blessings, we, we need to be a blessing to others. And during this Thanksgiving holiday season, I hope everyone can reflect on that and help each other and encourage each other as we move forward as the pandemic at this moment continues to affect so many people in the world and certainly in our nation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. And I believe Commissioner Tom Van Stone has got a question for you.
I do. Thank you, Mr. President, through you. First, a comment. Dr. Ruffin, I, I, I need to acknowledge something later in our agenda item is it just goes into the record, we somewhat acknowledge it, but I always like to bring this to the forefront. Much later, we are going to show names of over almost one hundred teachers that have achieved additional education and certification towards what they offer our students. So I really want to acknowledge those teachers and say kudos to them for pursuing more education, making it them much more affordable to our students. And, and I'm already proud of our teachers, but we have almost one hundred teachers today that we will put into our record. And we, we sadly just kind of bypassed it as going into the record, but almost one hundred teachers achieved additional educational credits. So Dr. Ruffin, I want to, I won't call off all one hundred names, but I do think we need to, to say a little bit about the fact that our teachers are pursuing additional education, which only flows down to our students. So I acknowledge that. The second thing I'd like to ask, and again, it's, it's with the teachers in mind. Our new, and I hundred percent agree that we needed to go virtual. However, we still ask our teachers to go into the buildings and do their job, and they do. However, the governor has announced, and this is where my question comes in, that districts that go virtual, one hundred percent virtual, he will stop bringing resources to our district. And most of those resources are PPE. Now, I'm not sure, I don't know if I know how much PPE we accept from the state. And that bothers me quite a bit that that will stop if that's his plan. And that is what he announced yesterday. For our teachers who will still be going into the building. So, Dr. Ruffin, my question is, how much support do we get from the state with PPE? And are we doing anything to say timeout, we still need this if we are getting it? So, Dr. Ruffin, if you would, please.
Yes, and Commissioner, I would agree with you. We, we, we celebrate our teachers. We celebrate the ones that have recently added on to their education. But if you remember, we've also celebrated our teachers who have also gone on to receive Google certification. And, and, and we, and that is directly aligned to the virtual learning, the, the, the different ways that we want to continue to, to support our teachers. And very importantly, the way that our teachers are supporting other teachers in the district as we have moved into a virtual learning environment that we were not prepared to do in March. So great kudos to our teachers for those certifications and going back to school. And kudos to the ones who have also enhanced their Google certification because that is the platform that we have chosen to move forward with. And many of our teachers have also engaged in the new tools that we've purchased. Some at their request so that they can continue to enhance educational virtual environments. I'm very proud of our teachers and thank you very much for acknowledging them this, this afternoon. In response to the, the comments that I did hear, the, the governor say, I, I heard it today. And, but Waterbury Public Schools, along with many other districts in the state, received additional monies for the purchase of PPEs, disinfectant and, and a lot of supplies. We have already spent quite a bit of our money on those supplies and we already have those supplies in place. So our teachers and our students, when they return to the building, are not going to be lacking in anything. While we have not received a directive or a reduction in our funding from the governor, I was aware of the comments that were made today. However, Waterbury Public Schools made the very best decision that we could to protect our teachers and our students and our staff during a pandemic. And so regardless, and, and, and I'm not, I'm not pretending it isn't important. We certainly are going to justify what we not only have done, but what we need for the district. So we're, we're not going to hesitate in, in making our point why we need to continue to move forward and why we do need the funding to be able to enhance our educational system. We are, we are also poised to be able to provide everything that our teachers and our staff need to be able to conduct instruction and to do so in a building where all of the materials and supplies are located at this time. And we will pursue if ever there is a, a, a direction that we have received and writing. We have not received that from the Commission of Education and nor have we received any kind of directive and writing from the governor, but I did hear the statement. And, but we are poised in Waterbury to be able to continue to provide everything that our teachers and our staff and our students need to move education forward in our state.
Thank you, Dr. Ruffin. And I'll just bring a little bit of my professional world into this. I work with both the Canadian and United States military on projects. And there's a term called BZ. And it stands for Bravo Zulu. And that is the highest compliment anyone can get when a good achievement has been gained. So Bravo Zulu, BZ, to you, your staff, our teachers, our students, on getting through this. And again, it is the absolute highest honor you can get as a compliment in my world, dealing with the military. BZ to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Doctor, and Commissioner Van Stone. Our next agenda item is the President's comments. But I first like to start off with an apology to our two student representatives. I did not introduce them. And shame on me because they are members of my alma mater, Willby High School. Sumreen Mugal, is that how you pronounce your name? I hope so. He's still there on the screen, I see him. And Tenley De Salines, are you still on the horn?
Yes.
Thank you very much for being here tonight and welcome. My, my comments are very simple. COVID is not a hoax. I went through three weeks of it. And I scared the crap out of myself by unknowingly passing it on to my ninety-four-year-old mother. I wasn't as scared of the virus as I was of getting her deathly ill on my nickel. So I'd like to thank each and every one of you for holding up the fort without me. I hope you miss me. And I'd like to thank Karen Harvey for filling my shoes while I was gone. I did not watch it. I did not know that anything was going to happen other than a successful meeting. Ms. Harvey, thank you again for filling my shoes. For the record, your thigh is thirteen wide, but we'll, we'll work on getting you a real pair. Teach our every one of you that are here tonight. Happy Thanksgiving. Have a great holiday weekend coming up next week. And please help those who can't because it's important. Okay, with that, our student representatives, would you, would you, Sumreen, are you there?
Yeah.
Say, is that Sumreen?
Yeah.
Welcome. Do you or Tenley have any comments for the board? Don't be bashful, we're all friends here.
No comment.
No comment. How about you, Tenley?
No comment.
All right. Sounds like you've been conditioned by the press. No comment. Our next agenda item is the consent calendar. Does anyone wish to remove an item from the consent calendar? I don't see any, any movement, so I'm going to go forward and read off the consent calendar that we can vote on. Item ten point one, request approval of an agreement with the Hispanic Coalition of Greater Waterbury Incorporated for transition services for students with disabilities. Item ten point two, request approval of a student intern affiliation agreement with the University of Connecticut Speech Language Pathology Student Internships. Item ten point three, committee of, I mean, request the approval of a student-teacher affiliation agreement with the University of St. Joseph for student teaching opportunities. Item ten point four, request approval of a student-teacher affiliation agreement with the Western Connecticut State University for student teaching opportunities. Item ten point five, request approval of the Board of Education's two thousand and twenty-one meeting schedule. Item ten point six, request approval slash acceptance of a grant from Nellie May Educational Foundation. Item ten point seven, request approval of a contract with SNE Building Systems for a temperature control ventilation project upgrade at Carrington Elementary School. Item ten points eight, request approval of an amendment one to the Memorandum of Understanding with Wellmore Inc. for Emergency Mobile Psychiatric Services, or abbreviated as E M P S. Item ten point nine, request approval of an agreement with St. Vincent Special Need Center, Inc. for a special education services for students. Item ten point seven, I mean, ten point ten, request approval of an agreement with Ben Haven Incorporated for special education services for students. Ten point eleven, request acceptance of the Hopewill Elementary School Elevator Edition, number one five one dash oh three hundred space C V, project as complete. Item ten point twelve, request acceptance of the Chase Elementary School Elevator Edition, numbered one five one dash oh three oh one C V, the project is complete. Item ten point thirteen, request acceptance of the Kings Valerie Elementary School Elevator Edition, numbered one five one dash oh three oh two C V, the project is complete. Item ten point fourteen, request acceptance of the Spreg Elementary School Elevator Edition, numbered one five one oh three zero three C V, project is complete. Item ten point one. Item ten point one-five, use of school facilities by school organizations and/or city departments. And finally, item ten point one-six, use of school facilities by outside organizations and/or waiver requests. Can I get a motion to move on and approve?
Motion to approve the consent calendar items ten point one to ten point sixteen as read.
Thank you very much. Would anyone like to discuss any of them? No one wants to, so we're going to take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? The motion carries. Thank you very much. There is no item eleven, so we'll move on to item twelve, the Committee on Policy and Legislation, Commissioner Anne Sweeney.
Item twelve point one, ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on Policy and Legislation recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve the revised admission policy number five-one-one-one.
Second.
Any comment, discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Yes. Okay, I just wanted to let everyone know that this one and the one following were just updated to improve and clarify language, to add some legal references, and to clarify the McKinney-Vento Act.
Okay. No other comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No? Abstain? The ayes have it. The motion carries. Commissioner Sweeney?
Item twelve point two, ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on Policy and Legislation recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve the revised ages of attendance policy number five-one-one-two.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no, abstain? The ayes seem to have it. Thank you very much. The motion carries. Commissioner Sweeney?
Item twelve point three, the Committee on Policy and Legislation recommends the Waterbury Board of Education approve the revised alcohol use, drugs, and tobacco policy five-one-three-one-point-six.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Stango, good to hear your voice.
Also, I've been hearing yours, and it sounds very strong. Okay, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to postpone Agenda Item twelve point three indefinitely.
Second.
Discussion, questions?
Why?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yep. Go ahead, and then I'll get to Karen.
Mr. President, under discussion, Agenda Item twelve point three was placed on tonight's agenda in error.
Okay.
The resolution was never voted out of the Policy Committee. Therefore, it should not appear on tonight's agenda.
Very good.
Okay. Any other comments, Commissioner Harvey? Does that solve your question?
Yeah, I just want to state that that was my question because I did remember that this was not voted out of committee. So thank you for responding to that. So I'm all set, President Sweeney.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioner Stango and Commissioner Sweeney. Do we have to actually take a vote on not going forward? We do?
Correct. We do have to, yeah.
So any other discussion points? Seeing no one raising their hand, I'm going to ask everyone to approve by signifying aye.
Aye.
I think the ayes have it. Anyone say no? I didn't hear anybody, so we're going to move forward. The motion carries. Thank you very much. So is that a motion to a non-motion?
Yeah.
It's a motion to suspend indefinitely. To postpone indefinitely.
Our next agenda item, the Committee on Finance, Commissioner Rocco Orso, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
Committee on Finance requests approval of the Fiscal Year Twenty-One School Readiness Quality Enhancement Grant.
Second.
Discussion, comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed, please say no or abstain. Thank you very much. The motion carries as the ayes have it. Commissioner Orso, the floor is yours.
Thirteen point two, Committee on Finance requests approval to apply for the Connecticut State Department of Education twenty-twenty Low Performing Schools Bond Funding Grant for various schools.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion or comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no or abstain. Thank you very much. The motion carries. Motion is approved. Thank you, Commissioner Orso.
Welcome, sir.
Our next item is item fourteen, Superintendent's Notification to the Board. May I have that motion, please?
Motion to receive and place on file Superintendent's Notification to the Board, Items fourteen point one through fourteen point six.
Is there any discussion on these items? We're not talking of tonight, are we? With that in play, I will ask for a vote of yes to approve the motion. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed or no, please say no. Looks like the motion carries. Thank you, everyone. The ayes have it. Item number fifteen is unfinished business of preceding meeting only. Are there any items? Since I was in here, I don't have clarity on it, so I don't see any movement going on, so I'll move on to item number sixteen. Other unfinished, new and miscellaneous business. I take it that's a big nada, and would someone like to make the motion? Motion, oh, thank you, dear. There is a sanctity in that for you because I'm getting tired. May I have a, all those in favor to leave and adjourn the meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed, please say no, and we'll get the rubber wagon if you'd like to. All right, guys. Have a great Thanksgiving. Again, thank you for keeping the port rolling while I wasn't here, and special thanks to Karen. Appreciate it. See you guys after the holiday, okay?
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Bye-bye.